Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council, including the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency, scheduled to begin at 1:00 P.M. We're a little late this morning, but now I'd like to call on Member Marker for the flag salute, if you would all stand, please.
Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, May. Okay, we'll roll on to the next item, and that's the roll call. City Clerk?
Councilmember Malato?
Here.
Councilmember Marker?
Here.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Downs?
Here.
Mayor Kite?
Here.
Thank you very much. The next item on the calendar is a special presentation, and I'd like to call on Gabe Cowding, Director of Marketing, who will introduce the General Manager Shannon Gilbert of the Ritz Carlton Hotel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know our Ritz Carlton property is one of the crown jewels in our resort community here, and so although we were sad when Kelly announced that she was moving over to the coast, we're delighted that a new general manager's been named. So at this point, I'd like to ask Tiffany Gorman, who's the Director of Sales and Marketing, to come up and introduce the newly appointed general manager of the Ritz Carlton.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kite, esteemed Council members and staff. It is an absolute pleasure seeing you all, and I can't thank you enough for all the support that you've given us at the Ritz Carlton Rancher Mirage. We are proud to share that we have reopened the Edge Steakhouse, and we have begun remodeling the resort, which will bring it a fresh new look. So without further ado, it brings me great joy to introduce you to our new general manager, who has over 29 years of hotel experience and is returning back to the desert where she started her career. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Shannon Gilbert.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kite, esteemed Council members. It is my pleasure to be here today. Thank you for having me. It is an honor to return to the city of Rancher Mirage and the Coachella Valley. I started my career here in 1993 at the Ritz Carlton in Rancher Mirage, and I'm thrilled to be your new general manager. Thank you so much for the partnership over the years and for the many years of partnership ahead to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Is there any questions of Shannon while she's here?
No, we welcome you, and we look forward to having you here for many years, and thank you for being here today, and we know you're going to be very, very successful.
Thank you.
The Ritz has always been one of the highlights of Rancher Mirage for people coming and going, and I would suspect it's going to continue that way into the future, and we certainly look forward to working with you on current plans and future plans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to the non-agenda, public comments, and I turn to the City Clerk to handle the public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have two speaker cards. The first speaker is Wally Melendez.
Good afternoon, City Council, administration, people of Rancher Mirage. I went to Orange to look at the Mirai, and I was disappointed. It's a big ugly sedan. Toyota, if you're listening, you need to change the style of your Mirai and not make it so ugly. And it's overpriced. Today, this morning, I saw a clarity. I have been told by many dealers of Honda that I've called, and I asked them, "Which is the car that you make that's a hydrogen FCEV?" And they say, "It's a Clarity." Well, this morning, I saw a clarity, and it's not a hydrogen FCEV, it's a hybrid. When you hear of a hybrid, think of battery and gasoline engine. That's what hybrid stands for. So Honda, I hope you're listening. So now I have to find the nexo that's made by Hyundai. Wish me good luck. So that's my report for today. We need to think environment. We need to think cleanliness of the air. Chevrolet puts out the boat that replaces the boat, and supposedly the battery that's it's just an electric vehicle. Supposedly, the battery that's in there can charge up to about 260 miles range. And I have to add to that, you have to know how to drive an electric car like I do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brad Anderson.
Good afternoon. My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Rancher Mirage, and I didn't take any notes today, so I'll be brief, hopefully. I just want to emphasize and maybe point out something that I'm sure the City Council and City staff is aware of on the administrative citation process that you have. I know for a fact that the city has used that negatively against, or possibly against people for possibly speaking at this podium. And that's not only a morally corrupt crime, but when you go through the process, you may not be aware of this, the city will not give you any discovery material, meaning they won't give you any of the citation notes or the photographs taken until you actually appear for the citation hearing. And, of course, that's through the Citation Processing Center, which the city overrides anyway when they give a hearing officer. But that's a whole nother issue. And when we get to the courts, Riverside County, there's an issue there too, meaning there's one person or one judge, not really a judge, but a commissioner that oversees all the cities. So I don't think the city's totally alone in this of reprimanding or misusing the co-compliance and administrative citation process. It's a revenue driver, I believe. But anyway, I just want to put out a call. Anybody has any issues, I'm in the book. Look me up. I'm just collecting data now, because I think this is going to be a big deal. And I did get an opportunity to review your last meeting over the Internet, and I'm kind of slow on that. But I have an issue with one of the I guess a couple Council members talked about the Children's Museum. The only thing I want to emphasize, I live next to a person that profits from that organization. If you're going to take your kids there or anybody, please research board members and beneficiary people that give to that charity. And that's another thing. I think it's referred to as a charity, but I don't believe it really is. I think it's just a private nonprofit, but that could be maybe cleaned up too. And I understand that you're going back to live meetings, which is great, and apparently there's an issue of not doing remote meetings anymore, for whatever reason. And I'm not surprised that the city would want to limit itself from public scrutiny or probably looking in, people looking in. But I'm going to run out of time, so I'm going to leave it at that, but I have a lot to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone in the audience who did not fill out a speaker card but would like to speak? And there is no one. That's the last speaker.
Okay, thank you very much. Now move on to the next item, which is the Council Board Member Comments. And I'd like to begin with Councilmember Marker. Do you have a comment?
Oh, thank you. Yes, I attended the Gallery Classic last week, and it's nice to see professional golf back at Mission Hills. I was able to walk the course with a few of the players the first few days, and the weather was spectacular. And yesterday, I was with my fellow Council members at the Wolfson Park dedication. It was a beautiful day, and thank you to everyone on all fronts who worked hard to make this happen, and former Mayor Townsend, who was recognized. It was truly a team effort. And I encourage all to enjoy our city's beautiful, pet-friendly hiking path. We are so fortunate to live in this climate, which enables us to enjoy the outdoors and embrace an active lifestyle from golf, tennis, pickleball, hiking, biking, and so much more.
Thank you. Councilmember Malato, do you have any comments?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give a special thank you to Del Webb Rancher Mirage. They invited me to participate in a city update at their Connect Gathering, and I asked Councilmember Ted Wile to join me, as well as Commissioner Michael O'Keefe, who's not only the cultural commissioner, one of the cultural commissioners, but also a Del Webb resident. And we provided what's going on with the city, city updates, events, programs that are available, and I'd like to thank them for their wonderful hospitality. Over 130 people attended that event, and we're looking forward to another gathering on May 24. My second comment is I'd like to extend a big congratulations to our neighbors at the city of Palm Springs. They're celebrating their 85th anniversary, and we're so thrilled for all the residents in Palm Springs. They're going to have a big parade down Palm Canyon this weekend, and the best, another 85 years.
Thank you. Councilmember Wile, do you have any comments?
I do, Mayor. Thank you so much. Yesterday, as Councilmember Marker just mentioned, we had a ribbon cutting at the Wolfson Park. It was really, I thought, outstanding. As a matter of fact, there's a few pictures, if you'd be kind enough to put them up, of the event. The park is extremely popular. As you know, it's at the corner of Frank Sinatra and Duval, and it leads to the entrance to the Butler Abrams Trail, one of the most popular hiking trails and walking trails in our city. It was a nice event. There is the ribbon cutting. And one of the special features yesterday was also the fact that the Glassman family were able to be present. The Glassman family is related to the Wolfsons. They have been part of the history of the city for many, many years, and so they were there. Sadly, Mrs. Glassman broke her hip a few days ago and was unable to attend, but we had family members, and it was terrific. I want to mention that one of the individuals that came up to me at the ceremony was most appreciative of the fact that we on this council, over the past number of years, fought diligently to make certain that the trail itself was devoid of any sort of electric vehicles and so forth. As we know, the C.V. Link originally had intended to use this trail, and we objected to that, and these people were most appreciative that we were maintaining the tranquility and the privacy of the many residences along the Butler Abrams Trail. So that gave me personal satisfaction. I also, and I hope that our Public Works Department doesn't get too carried away with a swelled head, but they did a magnificent job in restoring this facility. I mean, the city acquired the property, which was candidly a dilapidated house on a severe downslope. So not only did it involve the demolition of a structure, but it required quite a bit of landfill. In addition to that, the paving now for an additional 20-plus cars off-street was terrific. If you went by there previously, you used to see cars parked on Frank Sinatra, which was not safe. Now, most of those cars have been removed. In addition, the city has faced and met its sustainability objective by having EV charging stations on site. So that, along with some park benches, is just a tranquil setting. This probably is the second most popular dog-walking area in our city. We have a beautiful, beautiful dog park, and I would say this probably is the second most active. So again, I thank everybody that participated. It was an outstanding day, and again, it's another amenity that our city can be very proud of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Mayor Pro Tem Downs, do you have a comment, please?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to talk about the Gallery Classic PGA Champions Tour event that took place weekend before last on the Dyna Shore Tournament Course at Mission Hills, and why that's important to the city. Now, it did mark the 52nd consecutive year of professional golf in the city of Rancher Mirage. Now, to be sure, this event was a little different than the previous 51. The previous 51 events, the champion wore a skirt and jumped into Poppy's Pond at the end of the tournament. This year, one of the players lit up a cigar and smoked it for a good portion of the tournament. So a little bit different this year, a little more laid-back event. But it was well-received. It was a great tournament, and I think it's six or eight of the champions' players who played in that event will play this weekend at the Masters in Augusta. And we had some of the greatest names in golf over the last two or three decades, who graced us with their presence. So it's important for us for a couple of reasons. One, of course, is because many of us in Rancher Mirage are of an age that remember all of these great players who delighted us with their play over the last two or three decades, and it was wonderful to see all of them play on the Dyna Shore Tournament Course the weekend before last. So that's one reason why it's important for us is because we get to see these great players. But another is because it highlights the city of Rancher Mirage as a tourism destination. Tourism is the primary engine that drives the economy in our city, and an event like this helps us showcase our city to the world as a remarkable tourism destination. And so one of the things that our marketing department did was put together a spot that highlighted the city of Rancher Mirage that was played on national television, the Golf Channel, during the course of that tournament, that highlighted our city as a great tourism destination and promoted us as a great place to come and visit. And I wonder if we can run that spot.
Imagine a place where birdies tell tales. Where hard to describe is easy to find. A place that brings the stars closer to earth. Can you imagine? This is Rancher Mirage.
As I said, that spot was seen all over this country on the Golf Channel and showcased the city. And so, Gabe, we might want to mention to Shannon and Tiffany, who couldn't stay for this part of the meeting, that the Ritz Carlton was one of the Rancher Mirage properties that was showcased in that spot. So it's important for the residents of this city and for our business community to know that the city has signed a long-term contract. We will be the sponsor, one of the sponsors for this event for the next four years. We'll be spending $750,000 or more to promote this city as a great tourism destination. And so hopefully, this great tournament will be part of the Rancher Mirage experience for many years yet to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It certainly was a great event, and look forward to the additional ones in the future. Next item is the City Manager Comment. Isaiah, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
None today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now move on to the consent calendar, and I'll turn that back over to you, Isaiah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have 13 items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number 1204, second reading, amending section 2.44.010 of the Rancher Mirage Municipal Code to adjust the monthly compensation and benefits for City Council members and the mayor. Item number three is to adopt resolution number 2023, next in order, approving the updated calendar year 2023 salary schedule that complies with the Cal-Purs requirements, which will be posted to the city's website. Item number four is to adopt resolution number 2023, next in order, authorizing the execution of surety bonds to meet the financial security requirement for the Rancher Mirage Energy Authority (CCA) program. Item number five is to adopt resolution number 2023, next in order, authorizing the city manager to enter into settlement agreements related to various agencies for the opioid settlements, the proceeds of which will go to drug rehab programs here within the community. Item number six is to approve the March 16, 2023, regular meeting minutes. Item number seven is to receive and file the annual board commission reports. Item number eight is to approve the final acceptance of Fire Station 50 seismic and building improvements. Item number nine is to approve the final parcel map, number 38106. Item number 10 is to approve a special assistance fund award to one qualified nonprofit in the amount of $5,000. Item number 11 is to approve the contracts. Item number 12 is the approval of demands. And item number 13 is to approve the extension of completion date for track map, number 36809, Del Webb Rancher Mirage. Before we go to the council with any comments or questions on the consent calendar, Kristi, will you please take public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, I do have three speaker cards from Brad Anderson for consent items.
Great, thank you again, Brad Anderson, City Rancher Mirage. I wanted to speak on item number two, and that's concerning the City Council wages or increase in wages. Again, I reviewed the meeting, and I think one of the council members stated that $30,000 is enough to do one of the jobs here. And I know a lot of people live on $30,000 or less, and they do. I mean, I just thought that's a pretty blatant comment, because I don't believe this job dictates a higher wage of $30,000. But that's my opinion. And I just, I know the city manager, the city staff, everybody's got wage increases for the past three years, and a lot of people have it. That doesn't work in the city, I guess. I have an issue with this, especially being implemented 30 days after this reading. I think a lot of cities would go ahead and do this for the next city council being elected. I think that's a process for other charter cities, but I'm not sure. But I would like to see that. So because it's a direct, if I can give myself a rage, I would too, or raise and raise. I'm sorry. And I would like to go ahead and skip to item number four now, if that's okay. I'll just keep right along. And that's just, again, I'm one of the 1%ers. I don't, I'm not part of this City Rancher Mirage power grid thing. And I opted out a number of times. The city has, I call it hijacked, my Southern California Edison account two times. And I know anybody who comes to the city, they don't get the Edison one before the Rancher Mirage one. So it's just set up that way, but I hate to see that because a lot of people would just stay with it. But I just want to comment, and I know you're given half a percent or 1% more or a discount. I would be against any type of funding or any kind of increase or, well, this bond issue. I wouldn't be for that, but again, it is city funds. So I'm going to, I wanted to opt out on item number five. I forgot about the opium thing, so I'm not going to comment on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on the consent calendar? That is the last speaker.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, before this goes back to the council, we do have one council member that will need to recuse herself from item number 13. So Steve, I'm not sure if you're handling the recusal.
So at this point, Councilmember Marker has requested
Malato.
Oh, Malato, sorry about that. Sorry about that. Has requested to recuse herself from this particular item, which is item number
13.
Item number 13.
Her primary residence is within Del Webb.
Yes, her primary residence is located there. However, because it involves her primary residence, she could step down to the podium and speak as a homeowner if she wishes to.
So what we will need the council to do is, when it comes time to making a motion and voting, all five council members can vote on items 1 through 12, and then take a separate vote for item 13.
Okay, thank you. We've taken all public comments, and now come back to the council for comments.
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. So first, I'd like to comment on item number seven. Item number seven is the annual board commission reports from the various commissions and boards for the city. There are four reports that we received today. And the reason I wanted to mention this specifically is to say thank you to the commissioners and the board members who serve on those various commissions, who donate their time to make the city a better place to live. And so I think it's appropriate to recognize them, and I wanted to mention them by name. So on the Community Cultural Commission, the people that we should thank for their time are Kayla Pressman, Michael O'Keefe, Sally Trademan, Donna Malouf, and Frank Farino. On the Community Parks and Trails Commission, Celeste Weisight, Dennis Constant, who is here in the audience, Eddie McLoughlin, Eric Wright, and Fred Strach. On the Library and Observatory Advisory Commission, Ron Treet, Donald Stein, Dom Summa, Lois Reese, Steve Ezer, and the non-voting member, who is a technical advisor, Rick Lambright. And then on the Library and Observatory Foundation Board, Allison Solstesiak, Lucy Tagmire, Christine Hughes, Leslie Yusow, Patrice Merritt, Robert Moon, and James Soa. So thank you so much for your efforts on behalf of our city, and thank you for submitting your annual report. And the other item that I wanted to speak to is item number 12. Item number 12 is city contracts. Specifically, I wanted to speak to item number two on the contracts list, which is Desert Publications and the $180,000 contract for creating a hardbound book commemorating the city's 50th anniversary. So I'm going to vote in favor of the consent agenda. It is the case favor of the consent agenda. It is the case that we had some discussion at this council, at our last council meeting, about the idea of creating advertising and having advertorials, I guess is the term, in the book. I've thought quite a bit about that since that last meeting. And it's an idea and a concept that I'm not comfortable with. And I wanted to make sure that my fellow council members and city staff was aware that I'm not comfortable with that idea. And I think that it might be appropriate for us to rethink whether or not it is the right thing to do to promote advertising among the city's businesses in a publication that is intended to celebrate the city's 50th anniversary. Something tells me that this is an issue that staff will probably study and may come back to us with a review of this item at some later time. And I'd welcome that review if and when it comes. But I wanted to make sure that people are, people on this council and on this city staff are well aware of my opinion, which is that this is not the best thing for us to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, do we pull this item and then vote on the balance?
No. So the item on the consent calendar is just the contract to go ahead and contract with Palm Springs Life for the purpose of making the 50th Anniversary Magazine. It's not dictating whether we sell ads and that or not.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I wasn't suggesting that we pull that item. I wasn't suggesting that we have that debate today about whether or not it's appropriate. I simply wanted to state my opinion. I do want to retain it on the consent calendar, and I do intend to vote in favor of the consent calendar.
Thank you very much for your input. Any other items to contact on this particular number 13?
No, Mr. Mayor, but I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar. There is not a necessity for any item to be pulled. Mayor Protem's comments regarding the advertising in the book that's being prepared, I think, will be explored in more depth by the marketing department at another time. I appreciate his opinion. And I think that we will all have an opportunity to express our views, so that it's not necessary during the consent portion of the calendar. But based upon that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion again to approve the consent calendar, items 1 through 13. And of course...
Councilmember Wild...
I was going to say that Councilmember Malato would excuse herself on item 13. Now you want to vote on that separately from the other...
Please, if you could, if you wouldn't mind just amending the motion to items 1 through 12.
And we will do that. The motion is to vote now on items 1 through 12. We'll have a separate motion on item 13.
Thank you. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And now, if you would, the motion for approval of item 13 by itself.
Second.
Motion carries...
That should be yes.
Okay, let me cancel that. One moment. Okay, please enter your votes. Motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Malato recused.
Okay, thank you very much. And good suggestions regarding the funding of that expense in the future. It's certainly an item that's been addressed off and on over the years. But I think certainly the recommendation to spend a little more time and look at it in more detail is certainly worthwhile. Item number 14 now is the consideration of a resolution regarding annexation number 190 to the Community Facilities District Number One. And I'd like to turn this over to Kofi Atubon, the Director of Administrative Services, to present the staff report. Kofi?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. This item is to hold a public hearing on annexation number 190 into Community Facilities District Number One. This is the second and final step in the city's standard process for annexations into Community Facility District Number One. The first step was considered at the February 16 meeting and approved by the city council. So the territory proposed for annexation is located on the northwest corner of Cypress Lane and Palomino Lane and comprises of one parcel totaling approximately 1.03 acres. The project is slated to subdivide a single parcel into four residential parcels. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed and in the absence of a majority protest, the city council may consider adoption of the attached resolution, calling an election, declaring the results of the special election, determining the validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval, and that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the city clerk to take public testimony at this time.
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to provide public testimony regarding this agenda item? And there are no comments.
Thank you. Can you announce the election results, please?
Certainly. The ballot for the two eligible votes was received on March 29, 2023, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any comments on this item? Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that the city council adopt resolution number 2023, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number One, annexation number 190, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien in connection with tentative parcel map number 38315.
Thank you. There's a motion. Do I have a second, please?
I second it.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Now going to the action calendar. Item number 15 is consideration of a contract for citywide crack sealing, 2923381. I'd like to turn this over to Ryan Stendell, the Director of Public Works, to present the staff report. Ryan?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. While my presentation is coming up, this item before you is related to the annual citywide crack sealing contract. But I wanted to take a quick second again and go back over just how important the commitment this council makes to its annual roadway maintenance program. And hopefully, my presentation is, there it goes. So we're on an approximately seven-year roadway maintenance program where our goal is to hit every public roadway within seven years. The current methodology that we've been using that works very well is to crack fill or crack seal in the springtime. We let that cure through the summertime, and we come back in the fall with our reas, what we mostly refer to as our slurry coating. Oftentimes, we get questions of why so much time in between the crack fill in the spring and the fall reas process. And the answer is really just that that pavement is moving, physically moving more than anybody really understands. And giving that period of time in between crack fill and slurry is very important to make sure that the cracks settle before we have that slurry come back over. Couple of photos popping up just to show you what the crack seal program is. Begins with just simply blowing out all the debris, filling with hot asphaltic material, and finally, just giving it time to cure again before we come back with our reas. So the area we're focused on in this year is the Magnesia Falls Cove area, and also Bob Hope Drive from Highway 111 on the south end to Frank Sinatra on the north termination point. We received six bids this year, which was a very healthy bidding process, with the lowest bid coming in just under $114,000. This is the first time in a couple of years we've had a bid come in below our engineer's estimate, which is, I think, good. Hopefully, it signs we're heading in a positive direction for public bidding. And the sources of funding for this project are both our Measure A and gas taxes. And you might ask, or a member of the public may ask, what does it matter? Public Works often grades our roads with PCI, a pavement condition index. The state average usually is around 60 to 65, and our current average is at 74. But what's interesting to note that in the green areas, if I can get my pointer over there, both excellent to very good to good, over 80% of our roadways fall within that category. And if you look at what they call the backlog, this is what the industry uses to tell a public works department if you're behind. Most of the time, the industry tells you if you're below 5%, you're doing an excellent job. The last time we had our PCI rating done, the consultant was saying if you're below 1%, you're among the elite. So this council should be very proud of the job you've done with your public roadways. And that right there does help, in staff's opinion, help define why this is important to us. So with that, that concludes staff's report. We are requesting approval of the lowest responsive bidder, Onyx Paving Company. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that this council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have any comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? There are no comments.
Okay, thank you. Going back to council for comments. Any comments, please? Ryan, the only comment I've had recently from residents is, how do we do the timing? For instance, doing timing right now or covering the issue right now, we're more in the season than less than the season. Do we address the location and how it's selected?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we're awarding the contract now. We won't be carrying out this work until the season's well passed. So this is more the administrative portion. We won't be interrupting anybody's roadways during season with the slurry or crack fill. So and then as far as how we selected the initial seven-year maps, it's really just kind of a function of looking at how the city lays out geographically. And so you'll see it sort of, it does make sense if you look at the seven-year map, how it moves throughout town. So it's an imperfect science that's working for us, and we're continuing, we believe that continuing with the spring crack fill and fall slurry is a very, very productive way to do it.
That schedule's also on our website. So if a resident that lives on a public street wanted to know when their street is scheduled to be redone, they would go to our website, and it's all there for them.
The residents in the area sure benefit from the overall crack sealing program. Okay, any more comments? No more? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll do the motion that the council award the contract for citywide crack sealing, CP 23-381, to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, Onyx Paving Company Incorporated, in the amount of $113,890.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 16, which is the consideration of a two-year partnership with the Coachella Valley Symphony for amphitheater programming. And I'd like to turn this back over to Gabe, who is the Director of Marketing, and will do the staff report. Gabe?
Thank you, Mayor Keit. Counsel, before you today, you have a request to a partnership with the CV Symphony. So a little context, and if you guys could bring up the presentation. So a little history on the CV Symphony. They were founded in 1993. They started, the Buddy Rogers Youth Symphony was formed in 1995. It's about 70-plus musicians, a lot that are, most of them are based in the Coachella Valley, a lot of here right in Rancho Mirage. And the Buddy Rogers Youth Symphony is made up about 30 youth musicians from across the valley. CEO of CV Symphony, Alisa Lindley, is a local obstetrician located here in Rancho Mirage. And the CV Symphony is actually based in Rancho Mirage. So back in 2021, as we were emerging from COVID, they, the CV Symphony approached us and said, hey, we'd love to do our annual Halloween spectacular, spooktacular, where all of their musicians dress up in various costumes, and they play all the hits, you know, famous hits from either movies or Ghostbusters or different Halloween songs. And to our surprise, about 800 people showed up. We did relatively nothing. They marketed the event. They did everything from there. So based upon that success, we proposed a 2022-2023 partnership in which there were three free shows. So their Halloween spectacular in October, in January, they did the Best of Stage and Screen, so famous scores from famous movies. And then their typical season costs anywhere between 90 and 100,000 to produce four shows. So we told them, well, we would, we would cover roughly half of that, and they would be responsible for funding the other half. So in doing that, they went out and retained John Lodge from the Moody Blues and did a ticketed event in March that was completely sold out. And that raised the rest of the money they needed to produce the whole season. And then here in April, the end of April, they'll, they'll do a Disney, Best of Disney. So they'll be projecting the Disney movies and then playing some of the famous scores from Disney movies. So it's been very popular. Each one's been well-attended. All the guests register in advance. There's availability for about up to 800 people to attend. So here's just a couple photos. But it's been very exciting. So what we're doing is, they've been very happy. We've been very happy with them. We're also exploring our Desert Theatricals group, who's our Broadway theatrical group, has an orchestra pit, a live orchestra at each of their, you know, each of their shows. So they're, they're interested. So we have a meeting set up next week or in two weeks from now, where Desert Theaticals and CV Symphony are going to look at ways that their musicians from CV Symphony can be part of that Broadway orchestra. And then another exciting part is we have a meeting with our library director to discuss the youth symphony. So right now, our library programming doesn't have any youth symphony involved. And then one of the exciting opportunities is there's not many youth theater programs that have a youth symphony involved in it as well. So there's a bunch of synergies there that are all kind of Rancho Mirage-based, and so we're exploring those opportunities. So today, you've got, so here's just a couple dates that we've kind of outlined for the amphitheater that worked this past season, that we'd like to duplicate over the next couple of seasons. And so today, you have before you that the city council would authorize the city manager and director of marketing to authorize a two-year agreement with Coachella Valley Symphony for three free shows for the public and Rancho Mirage residents and guests, and one ticketed event. And so I'm available for any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Gabe. An exciting program. It's really done well over the last couple of years. Is there any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? No comments.
Thank you. Can I have a council comment? Anybody interested in discussing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have to comment. Gabe, first of all, I have attended every one of the symphony shows, and they're terrific. Enjoyed immensely. Wonderful event. From a pure business standpoint, however, I would prefer seeing a two-year contract, but an option for the second year that would automatically kick in unless it were canceled 90 days before the second year. Anything can happen. There could be an earthquake where the amphitheater is damaged and we're not able to use the facility. I just, I don't like to see long-term contracts. I'm all for giving them the assurance that we're going to have two years, but an automatic option for the second year. So I don't know whether you had considered that or not. I tried to do that on anything that I'm involved with from a personal standpoint. And, you know, would appreciate your thoughts on that subject.
Yeah, absolutely. All of our multi-year contracts, since I've been involved, have a clause in there that they're, it's per budget approval. So it would go through the regular budget process. So if for any reason, counsel, we were facing a budget deficit, and this was where we wanted to grab from. So what this does is it does two things. It protects the city that we're only good for a year, and we can opt out. We have that provision to just eliminate it from the budget. But what it also does is, you know, a nonprofit or an organization like this has a little bit... bit of long-term stability that they can plan on rather than just go from year to year. So if they're out trying to recruit, you know, a famous musician, and the dates may not work for this year. So it's what we've done with Desert Theaticals. It's what we've done with these. So any multi-year contract has that clause in it that we can eliminate it from the budget if we choose, or we're facing a deficit or something that's not planned at this time.
Is there an out? But what you're describing is essentially a financial out. In other words, if the budget itself is affected in some way, there's an out. Is there an out for any other reason other than financing?
Good question. The out is actually more general. It's not tied specifically to budget. So all of our, you know, obviously, budget is usually the driver of those decisions. But the standard exit clause that we have within these multi-year agreements isn't restricted just to financial items.
Okay. That would be great. To me, that's a much more practical and a business approach. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ted. Any other council comments, please? Can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion. Music drives the spirit, and anything that involves our youth, I think, is absolutely wonderful. I make a motion that the City Council authorize the City Manager and Director of Marketing to enter into a two-year agreement with the Coachella Valley Symphony for three free performances and one ticketed event for residents and guests at the Ranch and Mirage Amphitheater in the amount not to exceed $50,000 per year.
And I'll second that.
Okay, there's a vote, please. There is a motion. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the final item for the day today. It's item 17, consideration of allocating additional funds to the turf rebate program. And I'd like to turn this over to Jessica Pulliam, Senior Management Analyst, to present the staff report. Jessica?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, Councilmembers. The item I have for council today is an update on the turf rebate program. The program continues to have incredible impact on the community and has resulted in the significant removal of turf and the conversion to more drought-tolerant landscaping. The program continues to be in incredible high demand, and a waitlist has formed yet again. Today, staff is recommending the City Council approve a final allocation for this fiscal year of 500,000, which will bring the program's total to 3.75 million. If approved, this will result in over 100 million gallons of water saved each year. As CVWD's funding for this program may run out, it is recommended that the City Manager be given authority to move funding between the CVWD partnership and the city's well-water rebate program, with any residual unused budget being returned to the city's general fund at the end of this fiscal year. In addition, CVWD may consider lowering their per-square-foot rebate across the entire program. The intent would be to continue the city portion at $3 per square foot for residential and $1 per square foot for HOA commercial unless other direction is given by council. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any public comments on this item?
Yes, I do have one speaker card. Brad Anderson.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City Ranch and Mirage. I am opposed to this. I don't think this should go on any further. People can definitely afford to do this themselves. They have barely to contract to the Water District for their refund. But I don't believe every city resident should pay for Eisenhower or other big corporations to have grass or even estates to have their turf removed. Because everybody's paying for it. There was talk before about reserves and why we have so much reserves. We have so much reserves, so special interests can come in and use those reserves, like has been stated over the COVID years, let's put it that way. But as written, I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on item number 17? That was the last comment.
Okay, thank you. Move back to the council for any closing comments.
I've got a question, Mr. Mayor. So Jessica, is the CVWD, will they continue to cooperate with us and match our funding?
They're willing to cooperate with us. They can't guarantee that they will match dollar per dollar. If their board chooses to reduce the amount, then their amount would be reduced. But city staff is recommending that the council consider leaving the $3 per square foot for residential.
Got it. Okay. All right, thank you.
Jessica, do you believe that this might be the last contribution to this program, or is it going to move on in the future?
Staff is recommending that this be the final allocation for this fiscal year.
So CVWD has let us know that they are going back to their... Or they went back to their board for one more budget allocation to this program on their side. And so they're anticipating that this program will end from their side because they'll run out of money. So we're partnering with their program. It's not our program. So when they stop theirs, that means that this program stops for us as well. So this will be the last allocation of funding. And as we indicated, we may not even get through the full budget. It just kind of depends on the demand and when CVWD hits their budget mark for the fiscal year. Because once they do that on their side, then this program's done until next year.
If they were to increase their amount, would that impact us?
So yeah, but they've indicated that they're not going back for any additional budget increases. So they're willing to continue to, you know, notify participants in the program that, you know, the city has potentially allocated more money if this is approved. The other item that they told us this week is that I think in the middle of this month, they're going to their board to consider a recommendation to reduce the CVWD side from the current $3 to what we heard was $2. So as an example, you know, we've been on the residential side, district's been at $3, city's been at $3. So the participants are getting $6 a square foot, which is why this program has been so successful because of these financial incentives. So if they go to $2, staff is recommending to leave the city portion at $3. So they would be getting $5 instead of $6. Now, if the council wants to provide different direction to say, no, if they go to $2, we go to $2, you know, that's fine. It's just from a staff perspective, we've been doing this program for almost a year, and everybody from the city side has gotten $3 on the residential side. So why change that with the last allocation? But again, if the council feels differently about that, we're happy to take that different direction. And that was not included in the staff report because we were just told this week about that development.
Okay.
Question. If CVWD, at some point in this program, after we have allocated, let's say that we're into it for 250,000 of the 500,000, and they notify us that they are terminating their participation, will we then conclude our participation at that point as well?
Yes.
So that conceivably, at some point, in other words, we're making a commitment of 500,000, essentially contention upon CBWD meeting us along the trail. If for some reason their objective changes, ours will as well. I think we should make that clear, that we're not reneging on any commitments we're making, but this is a quasi-partnership with CBWD.
Yeah, absolutely. It's their program, right? Really, from a city standpoint, the attractiveness of this is in the past, we had tried to do our own programs, and it was kind of a nightmare for participants trying to work through two governments that programs didn't sync. So it's their program. It's applicants go to CVWD. They... CVWD inspects. CVWD does everything. And then CVWD, the applicants get the full rebate, both the district's dollars and the city's dollars, from the district. And then we pay the district on the back end. So as soon as they end their program, this ends for us. So as you mentioned, if we, you know, get through $250,000 of our 500, and CVWD says, hey, we ran out of money, program's over, then we're done. So we don't continue this past then.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Jessica, you did a great job here. You've got a permanent job, I think, on redoing these turf programs. Thanks again. Can I have a motion, please?
Sure. I'll make a motion that the City Council approve an additional $500,000 budget allocation to the turf rebate program and authorize the City Manager or designee to take all further actions to implement the same, including approving and executing all associated agreements approved as to form by the city attorney.
Second.
Thank you, Ted. There's been a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is the last item for today's agenda. So I'd like to turn it over to Steve Quintanilla, City Attorney, to summarize the closed-session items. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council is now going to recess in a closed session pursuant to government code Section 54956.9D1 regarding the following cases. Vacation rental owners and neighbors of Ranch and Mirage et al. versus City Ranch and Mirage. Vacation renters... Rental owners and neighbors of Ranch and Mirage versus City Ranch and Mirage. Wendy Hope Heckman versus City Ranch and Mirage. And the fourth case, we left the name unspecified since disclosure may jeopardize pending settlement negotiations. The council will also meet in a closed session pursuant to government code Section 54956.9D4 regarding one potential initiation of litigation item.
And Mayor, we do have one speaker card.
Okay. We have testimony then?
Yes, Brad Anderson.
Thank you. I'm almost done. I'll leave you alone. My name's Brad Anderson. I live in the City Ranch and Mirage. I wanted to speak on all the closed-session items briefly, items 1 through 5. I'm really, really concerned about the ethically... I can't pronounce it... Of your city legal counsel. And hopefully, during these proceedings where you're in closed session, that some kind of log or some kind of details are given or taken. I know you don't have to, but hopefully, you do. Because, like I said, I'm just concerned... Because these, the top two cases, these are the residents of the city. And suing or you're litigating with residents of the city that pay your salaries. I mean, let's get that done and taken care of. And the Heckman case, overreach from the city. It has to be addressed and not just litigated forever. And the one with the number... Item number four, that you don't give the name, that of the case or the person, that was on the agenda before. Somebody like me could easily go back and look that up, and maybe I will. Because it's been going on forever. And like I said, I'm really concerned about the ethical values of the city council, and especially the legal council, and the contracts and other aspects of that organization or company. So hopefully, that's all I have to say. I just be ethical. I know. Try to do better. Thank you.
So Steve? Okay, at this point, we will return to closed session. A recess. In the open session?
There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Okay, we'll close session and adjourn.